Okay. A statement. President Governor Baker, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen is being conducted by remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercamera.org. If you have any public comments, please email selectman@northandoverma.gov. Okay, I'll call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for June 15th, 2020. First order will be public comment. I have not seen any things specifically sent to public comment. Sorry, did we have anything? Specific? For public comment?
There, there was one public comment that was emailed to everybody.
Okay, that wasn't a public comment? I wasn't sure if it was.
I think it, yeah, it had to do with one of the agenda items.
Okay, that was a rather lengthy email from the Unitarian Church, right? Do we need to read that in, do we need to read that into the record, or can we just submit that as a comment into the record?
You are required to read it. You can attach it to your agenda. Add it to your minutes.
And it's in the Board of Selectmen file, which is public right now, so where all of the things are stored, it's already been put in that file.
Okay, so we'll, we'll use that as a public comment and submit that to the record for this meeting. Okay, let's move to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight, June 1st and June 9th. Can we get a motion?
A move that the Board of Selectmen approved the open session minutes of June 1st, 2020 is written. Chris Nobley here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have a discussion?
Yeah. I just have a question. Sorry, Rosemary, go ahead.
Um, the, the June 1st ones, I, um, I do have an amendment to it. They read pretty much the same as they did before, but under flag policy continued. It reads, Ms. Medili stated she is voting in favor, but strongly believes that the time the flags out should be equal across all groups. So there is never a feeling of discrimination. So this is what I'm adding. She believes the policy can be considered arbitrary and capricious. And I, so that's, that's the only change.
Okay. All right, so we have that. And Laura, did you have any question?
I just had a question because I wasn't on the board, so should I abstain from that vote?
Yeah, you can abstain from the June 1st, yeah, since you were not a member of the board at that point. But you can definitely vote on the June 9th meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with an amendment to the, to the meetings with a request for an amendment. So do we have a motion on, well, actually, so Selectman Nobley, do you accept the friendly amendment made by Selectman Billy to your motion?
Certainly, accepted.
Okay. Okay, so let's do a vote. We'll go a roll call vote. Starting with Selectmen Medili.
Rosemary Medili, aye.
Selectman DeColigero?
Selectman DeColigero, aye.
Selectman Nobley?
Selectman Nobley, aye.
And Richard Vallicutt is a yes, so that is four, zero, with one abstention. Okay, now we'll have a motion for the June 9th minutes.
A move that the Board of Selectmen approved the open session minutes of the June 9th, 2020 is written. Chris Nobley here.
Laura Bates, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor will do a roll call. Selectman Medili?
Rosemary Medili, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Laura Bates, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Vallicutt, aye. Okay, so we have the minutes, our minutes approved. Okay, next we're going to move to governmental reports. First on that list is police training and policies. We have with us tonight our Chief of Police Chuck Gray and Detective Dan Cronin. I can see him in the background there. Why doesn't he come up to the table? And so
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if I share my screen so that the chief can give his presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, you putting it up, Melissa? There we go.
There you go.
Okay. So first order of business is, you know, given in the, what's going on recently and, and the call of the, that, uh, review police departments, um, policies, procedures, and, and best practices. We just start out, first of all, by reminding everyone that this isn't accredited police department. We've been accredited since 2010. Two major components of the accreditation is we have to establish policies that are unique to North Andover, but still follow the, the guidelines by state and national standards. And then secondly is we have to be assessed by a agency, an accreditation agency that comes in and physically looks at our policies, looks at our, our evidence locker, looks at our backup facility, looks at our crews to make sure we're abiding by those policies. It consists of a 250 mandatory policies and 150 optional, of which 69 need to be, uh, needed to become accredited. So moving from there, we've been accredited 2010 under Chief Stanley. Every three years, we go through an assessment again, NUM, and one of 93 municipal agencies in Massachusetts, out of, I think, this 340 cities and towns, so pretty significant. The reason for the review every three years is because they're dynamic in a sense that they could change. And they change in a sense of case law, they change in a sense of something that came up and, or they just changed as far as a better practice, a better way to do business. So we go through that every three years. On top of the policies in place, we actually, we complete our trainings every year. Sergeant Domenico is our training sergeant. He's responsible for ongoing roll call training, making sure officers are signed up for yearly in-service training, and arranging for training above and beyond what the department is required by law.
Chief, can I interrupt for a moment? And this isn't on, on you, but I did just get a text from someone that asked, was the plan for, Melissa, was the plan for this to be visible by the public? Because right now I'm being told that this screen isn't visible for those folks watching the public meeting.
Sorry, it's hard for me to mute and unmute. So no, it wouldn't be visible. They can follow along though, go right to the link on our government reports agenda. Right now, all they're going to see unfortunately is the, um, screen with our names on it, because that's all they, they can broadcast. But they can go to our agenda and follow right along, clicking link under governmental reports, a.
Okay, I'll, I'll let that person know.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, chief.
Okay, so anyways, going back to the training, now, the incident that happened, you know, you look at the proximate cause of what happened to the person, and obviously we all know the story. And, you know, we could say it's tactics, it's, it's, you know, the way things were being done in Minnesota. But what we really want to look at is the root cause, and the root cause could be training, tactics, policies in place, and best practices going on. So here in North Andover, especially among other accredited agencies, we pride ourselves in the fact that these policies are up to date, current, reasonable, and clear. And there's solid, verifiable realistic ongoing training on them all the time. Just an example of the training we went through recently is reviewed the bias-based profiling policy, training to make sure that no, um, no encounters with police are based on any sort of bias. We're prohibited from using such bias for profiling, and we're committed to identifying and eliminating any instances of bias-based profiling. In other words, if someone comes to us and said that they have an instance where they want us to investigate, we investigate fully. We've gone through training on hate crimes. Procedural justice and legitimacy, we've been doing since 2017 and 18, 18, 19. And that's done at the in-service level as well as the recruit academy level. And basically, this was brought out after Ferguson and instances in New York, Eric Garner, and stuff like that, that we, we really wanted to bring attention to, you know, police training and how we're, how we're being perceived based on, you know, not just mistakes, but also better, better ways of doing things. You know, we also do interactions with people with mental illness. Obviously, it's a hot button topic, topic. We've had instances with the, dealing with addiction and the opioid crisis, and also stressing and, and just how to, how to understand that it's a job and people, and if they're mad at us, it's not personal, it's, it's what we're representing. So moving on from there, use of force policy. I just want to point out, we have four use of force instructors department, which is really good compared to other departments, we maybe have one or two. We have four that teach not only at the recruit level at the academy, but also our annual firearms and use of force training, and we do that twice a year. If you look at the, the use of force policy, we go by what's called a use of force continuum. And what it is, is basically, you know, you can only use that amount of force necessary to accomplish a lawful objective based on the perceived actions of the person we're dealing with. So if, if they come in and just, you know, active, I'm sorry, passively resistant, you know, we're not going to take out a taser and, and use that. It's, you have to, if you look at the use of force continuum in the policy there, and I'm, I think Melissa's on the next slide, you can see that, you know, it's, the perceived subject actions, and then the threat perceptions base the reasonable officer response. So again, compliant person, you're going to be cooperative and use touch controls if necessary, or just use your voice. You know, an active resistant, someone that does not want to get arrested, that's going to require compliance techniques. And that's where it's, you know, you, you have to go with the physical, hands-on, lawful but awful stuff that we have to do. And you can see as, as it goes up and down, that's also dynamic. So if someone comes in and points a firearm at an officer, yes, that can be construed as deadly force, but the minute they put that down, you go back down to the continuum, and now you're back to, they put it down and say, I give up, now we're back down to compliant cooperative controls. So it's a very dynamic process, and that's gone on, it's, it's being taught at the academy level, at in-service training, and it's the, the Graham versus Connor standard. Moving on, we also have done integrated communications assessment tactics, and this is de-escalation training. This was done at the last year's in-service training. You can see it's, it's quite involved, and it basically teaches officers how to de-escalate if need be. And that, that is, in other words, if someone is actively resistant or volatile, if there's a way to give them a chance to cool off, if they're not hurting anybody, you know, that's, that's an option. And I used the, the video, an old cops episode back in the day, if anyone remembers, the Lynn Police had a person walking down Route 1 with a knife. And yes, he was volatile, yes, he was, you know, in a bad place, but if they, they had the road wide open, they could have let him walk to Boston, and he wouldn't have been, you know, made contact with anybody, and just give him a chance to, to go, come back down and, and, and just reevaluate. So great training, it gives the officers a skill set that, you know, person could be in crisis, emotional crisis, distress, physical disabilities, whatever, and it emphasizes you have other options, okay? So, that being said, moving on to community policing, if, if everyone remembers, a couple of years ago, we actually started kind of a mini C-Pop unit during the summer when the school resource officers were out. We're getting away from ticketing and moving towards community policing education. And what we're finding is, you know, it's, it's better to build relationships with the community that way. And we also have the restored justice jail diversion program through District Attorney Jonathan Blodgett's office, which is at the Los Angeles District Courthouse, available now to adults and juveniles for a variety of offenses, to provide an offense where they can complete a program that they agree upon, sign a contract, and once the program is completed, they stay out of the justice system altogether, cases dismissed. You know, it's just, it's another wonderful program where it gives someone a second chance to, you know, not go down that road in their life. And then finally, the, uh, Community Support Coordinator that we have, she'd been working part-time out of the police station, and it is absolutely awesome to have her here, because what we're doing is, as people are coming into the lobby in distress, we can actually call her right up and have her come out and, or lately call them on the phone and, and discuss options. And I'll give you an example without, you know, too much detail. We had a party come into the station that had an issue with a, a family member who had dementia. And if we handled things like we would have 10 years ago, it would have called for an arrest. And, you know, that, that didn't make sense, but again, that was how we were doing things. Now having Community Support Coordinator here, a whole other bunch of options come into play. We still write the report and document it. But at the meantime, we have other things to, you know, other ways of handling it without the criminal justice system. So, um, one of the things that were mentioned is the, um, just to wrap up here on my end, the eight can't wait initiative, and I'm, I'm ecstatic to tell you right now that there's eight things that they want to bring changes to police departments. We do all eight already, without even changing anything except one, which we'll get to that in a second, but we do, uh, number one is the, the van chokes or strangles. We haven't thought that in, since I've been on the job, and it's been 20 years. That is not taught at the academy level. It is not taught. You know, there, there's other defensive tactics, trainings that we go through. That is not one of them, and we do not allow those. De-escalation, again, I just talked about that. We, we, uh, every officer went through the training back in 2019 and, uh, learned the de-escalation training as, you know, a very vital tool on a tool belt, not so much belt they wear on their waist, but on the tool belt, you know, socially, emotionally. Warnings before shooting, uh, again, this, that, that whole use of force continuum, um, you know, we're, we're taught to verbalize, you know, get your hands up, whatever, you know, getting instructions to the person. Are there situations where we may not be able to verbalize? Yes, and that's when it's imminent life and death situation, not property, life and death. And, you know, that would be a situation where an officer would have to make that split-second decision, and based it on, you know, the totality of the circumstances. Again, we're trained twice a year on use of force. Requires exhausting all initiatives, again, de-escalation training. Bring the incident under control with the least amount of force possible. I mean, let's face it, if, if, if we go into situations, um, we're likely to get hurt as well. So again, if we have something else to use to, to bring the problem to a resolution, we will. Again, use of force, taught twice a year. Due to intervene, so this is the one, we didn't have it in our use of force policy per se, but every officer is taught at the academy recruit level and ongoing, that you're always watching what's going on, your partner, another officer. And yes, if something's happening where someone's using more force than necessary, you will intervene. Lieutenant Folds was able to get some information from some of his colleagues at the National Academy. And as of this week, Sergeant Solos, who was our accreditation manager, has put it in the policy, and it is being done as we speak. So that's being changed right now. Moving vehicles, we don't shoot at moving vehicles, again, unless life or death situation. Limited circumstances, of course, but in the meantime, it's, it's the imminent death, threat of death, or serious injury. And the person, the officer believes that such discharge will not endanger innocent persons. I, I've been, I, I can't remember last time I heard of a dropping fire in a moving car, but fire strictly disabled vehicle is, firearms shot at a vehicle disabled is strictly prohibited. And then the use of force continuum, again, we talked about that already, by animal training on that, and every single use of force incident is reviewed by the supervisor. The lieutenant in charge of operations reviews all these of force reports yearly, and any issues are brought forward to me. And again, if training, if training needs to be done, or if there was an incident that needs to be further investigated, it's done so. The reporting is also done for any taser deployment, any use of force whatsoever, even taking your firearm out and pointing it to your use of force, and a report is generated for that. And again, we have these on file to look back and, and look for any patterns or trends that become alarming to us. And then finally, Melissa will take this part.
There we go. Sorry, I just have to unmute and reshare. Okay, so we're just going to talk a little bit about the budget. The North Andover Police Department budget is about 5.4 million. A lot of people have linked it to the public safety budget as a whole. The public safety budget includes the Inspection Services Division, including the Building Department. It includes the Fire Department and ambulance, and so the police portion of that is 5.4. That's increasing about 3% from last year. That includes 911, dispatchers, crossing guards, animal control, about $200,000 in capital purchases. There's about 40 total officers. In the, oh, the budgetary amount for police training is 42,300. But if you look through the budget, you can see that we actually have other grants as well for police training that we utilize in order to supplement that budget. On top of, of course, the dispatchers being typically paid for by the state. And so I did some benchmarking on Claire Guff, just to kind of give you an idea of where we fall in some of our light communities. So the only way to benchmark currently is for 2018. State has not updated all of the 2019 numbers yet for actual spending, so this is based off of 2018. And what I went ahead and did was I did towns, only, you know, cities that are within 0 to 15 miles from us, and have a population between 20,000 and 43,045. I don't know why that number came up, but that's the number. And so you can see, they come up with a group of comps on those analysis, and I can basically run this any way that anybody wants, based on a million different factors. But this is per capita spending, and so, you know, our budget throughout is very lean, as I think you all know. But our police budget per capita spending for our peer group is actually second from the bottom, which, you know, is unusual. If you look at kind of the light community, and I know we always get camp competing in Andover, I'm not sure that's exactly the best comp for us. But something like Stonem, Wakefield, Danvers, and Reading certainly are, and is a great comp. And so it's interesting to see where we fall within those other departments. And so I went ahead to this for a few other departments too, just so we could see. So this is public safety generally, so like I said, that includes fire, ambulance, and the building department, again, second from the bottom per capita in spending. This is culture and rec, and one of the important things about culture and rec, and it actually, I don't really know why, but culture and rec is only the library. It falls, again, second from the bottom, right in line with our police spending. One thing about culture, about libraries, that the library actually receives a lot of aid through specialized, through specialized aid that only goes to it and is not unrestricted, so, you know, that is not shown. This is really only reflecting our operating budget. I did it for human services as well, so human services includes the youth center, the senior center, and veterans. And interestingly, on this one, we're second from the top per capita, which I think is a very positive thing.
Melissa, did I, for, for, for rec and culture, culture and rec, you said that only includes the library. Is that the case with the other communities that we're comparing ourselves to?
It's hard to know. It's hard to know. And so we have to assume that they, they dump data in the same way. I can, I'll try to, to look closer at it. The problem is that every, a lot of the time, things are classified differently. One thing I could try to do, which would be interesting, is to combine the youth and culture and the human services and see where we land.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd be interested in seeing how that looks. I'll try to do that tonight and see where it falls.
Now, did you say that, that like, literally like our service, like our youth center, is that falling under human services? I don't know if I cut you off as you were
No, no, the youth, the youth center falls under human services.
Human services, yep.
Yeah. And so I, some other communities could have their rec falling like this one, which could be why, could be why we're lower here and higher here. I, I'm going to add the numbers up and see. I, I, it's an interesting question. Going to see where we would fall. I'll try that tonight. And then the last one I just did was education spending per capita, and you can see that on that one, we fall fifth from the bottom. Just some interesting data. I love data. So, you know, it's always nice to see kind of where we are among our peer group. I believe that's everything. I'm going to stop sharing unless it's any one slide that you're particularly interested in that you want me to go back to.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief Gray and Melissa for that presentation. Let me open it up to the board for any questions or comments or
Mr. Chair of the committee early, a couple of different comments. I'll start with Melissa's report first. Having served on the Finance Committee and on the Board of Selectmen, the town of North Andover has always been lean. Our DPW and our public safety has always run extremely lean. And it's amazing the great work that our town employees do to, to protect us and keep us safe, both DPW and police, you know, the roads, of course, and so on. The, uh, the other point I want to make is to kind of follow up on Chief Gray. When we first became this, what, what's the right phrase, chief, about the report again, a certified community?
Accredited.
Accredited, thank you, thank you. The word escaped me. It was a big deal, a huge deal. People do not know the amount of work and training that goes in to get, it is a huge undertaking. And I think it's the time that we got it, we were one in the top 5% throughout the state that even accomplished it. We were, it was very unusual. It's great to hear that other communities are, are taking this on. But I think in, in, with all due respect to the chief and his this is a big deal, this training and this accreditation. It, it says a lot for, uh, public safety in policing. So I just didn't want that to get lost. And the other thing too, I'd like to also say that Lieutenant Folds, having attended the FBI academy, is also the training that he has learned and brought to the town is, is just fantastic. I, again, he spent a lot of time down there, he worked very hard, and I'll tell you, the knowledge that he brings, that he is now putting into place in North Andover is also a, a great win for the town of North Andover, and well worth the time and the effort that he put in and us making arrangements so that he could take that time down in DC to do this training. So I think we are, even on a low budget, we are a community that frankly has set itself apart from others. So I just wanted to make sure that the public kind of knew the, the breadth and the depth of those accomplishments. So thank you, uh, chief and lieutenant. Folds on that. Okay, I'm all done.
So chief, I had, I had a question too. So year after year, when we set our goals, every, every fall we set our goals, and every year, my goals always include continuing training for police and fire. So I see, you know, we have 43,000 in allocate, 42,300 allocated for police training plus grants. So can you give me how many officers a year, like, what's the typical training program for an officer year over year? Does, does every officer have enough to go through some type of training every year?
Yes, so, um, every year that the, the state mandates 40 hours of what's called in-service training. And that's firearms, that's a legal update, that's motor vehicle update, and then whatever the state decide, or CPR and first responder, and then what the state decides to again, in years past, we focused on addiction awareness, de-escalation, handling people with mental illness. So you can see, it, it keeps with the times and the trends as far as what's going on in the world. And that's the mandatory training. The above and beyond training is what someone like Lieutenant Folds went down to the National Academy. He wasn't required to, but he wanted to do that. And he brought a skill set back that was benefiting the whole department. Certain officers go in to learn about forensics. We have an officer who's, you know, um, learning about, uh, what's Pat doing? So yeah, Officer Byrne is doing the evidence, um, room audits and stuff like that, to make sure we're up to standards with the evidence we have inside the, the building. So we have all kinds of training going on every year. Like I was telling Melissa, the, the problem sometimes is the fact that we're lean on personnel right now. So it's tough to schedule someone to go for a, a two-week training and have to backfill that position, especially holding officers over, because no one can take it. So it's, it's, it's a game of chess that we have to play every year, but for the most part, our, our thoughts on training is we, unless we absolutely have to say no, if someone wants to go to training, and it's worthwhile for the department, they get to go.
Comments or questions?
So chief, for the eight policies that you laid out, you talked about how, I mean, we've been pretty progressive as a department by proactively seeking out these policies, implementing them. you talked about how, I mean, we've been pretty progressive as a department by proactively seeking out these policies, implementing them. I think it's that we've, we've not, this is on you, this is collectively, we've not done a good job of projecting them to the community that these are things that our officers follow and our department follows. What, what checks and balances exist to make sure that those are actually followed through with?
That would be, that's the three-year assessment. So when they come in every three years to review us, they have to make sure that the policies are in place, but they're implemented by the personnel. So they have to have training on them constantly to make sure they're aware of our best practices. We're, we're essentially, we're held to a higher standard.
So for like, de-escalation, for instance, if there was an interaction right now between an officer and a resident, how would, whether or not they appropriately applied that policy, how do you assess that? As either the chief or if one of the lieutenants do it or?
Well, that would come down to a supervisor, be it a sergeant or even another officer. But for the most part, an incident, and again, it's, it's very tough to put this into a very black and white statement because every incident's different. They're dynamic, they're not static. So they're constantly changing and evolving. And what happens with one person may not work with another based on a number of variables. So if an officer goes up there and tries to de-escalate, and for whatever reason, it didn't happen, and let's say we had, you know, an arrest made, and we bring them back and the report's made, and the person that got arrested, you know, we read the report, we read all the rest reports to begin with. And if we have a situation where we say, geez, you know, did this person talk their way in the back of the cruiser, or did you decide that? And again, we're, we're evaluating the reports, we're evaluating everything going on. Was the person intoxicated, were they not listening to us, were they not gonna listen to us? And based on that, is how we can determine whether or not the policies were followed.
So after every arrest, that's the trigger is?
Every.
We reflect whether or not, not just these eight policies, but all policies the department has?
That's the whole point of having supervisor review the report. Because what happens is, after an arrest is made, except for a warrant arrest, you know, let's say it's a, an OUY. We made the arrest for OUY, and the person came in and the sergeant reviewed the report and found that, you know, maybe we could have, obviously the person had to go, you know, to jail because they were under the influence of alcohol on a public way. But if something happened along the lines there that maybe got the person fired up and, and ended up having a, you know, something in the booking room or whatnot, we're always reviewing the reports to make sure we, everything's being done appropriately and, you know, within reason.
And Chief Gray, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that anytime there's any use of force, no matter what level, a special report has to be submitted and they're reviewed by the supervisor and then reviewed again quarterly and annually?
Yeah, correct. Every single use of force. And again, like I stated earlier, a use of force is, is taking your firearm out and pointing it. That's a use of force, that gets reviewed.
Um, I mean, I, could I also call out the slide? And I, I guess it doesn't matter because people can't see it, but they are, I mean, I know that folks are following along at home. I think the slide about specifically Deanna Lima, our Community Support Coordinator. So she's part-time at the Police Department, meaning she's physically going to the Police Department part-time, but she's a full-time employee.
She has an office at the station.
Yeah, so I, cause I, I know that's a newer position. That's one that, you know, basically has evolved over the past three years. You know, we prioritized it, I think, two, but three budget cycles ago. This will be the third one that I think we funded her. And, I mean, I know I hear stories. I mean, you, you told the story, and I, I think actually you relayed the story in a little bit more detail to me a few nights ago, where really, I mean, it's the perfect example, right? Where you had an individual with, with dementia who attacked a family member, but it wasn't a public safety issue. It was one that required communities, a, a, a social worker to help navigate social services so that that person who has a known medical condition and wasn't acting with male, male intent, ill intent, that that was a person that we were able to work with outside of the public safety world. How, what, what's the trigger for, for Deanna or whoever ends up occupying this position? And how you involve that role in a first responder situation?
So, just like any call for service, you know, we, we evaluate the call, we look into it. And again, with the, you know, diversion program with procedural justice, maybe an arrest is not gonna solve the problem. It may solve the problem temporarily, but not for down the road. And so what we do is we, we reach out to Deanna and say, hey, Deanna, let me, let me bounce something off here. What do you think about this, this, this? And if she can offer services, she by all means will either call the officer and say, have them call me. She'll go meet the person at their house before this whole, you know, virus thing. You know, and she's gone to court and helped the people at the courthouse do whatever business they need to do. So it, it's been an unbelievable asset to have her at the station. And again, if you walk in the lobby, you go to the right, there's the officer in charge, the police sergeant at the desk, and you can, you know, talk to them and ask a question. And right directly across all and records is where Deanna's sitting. So she can actually get right out on the floor in a matter of seconds and started, start helping out.
It's like in the instance of a, since the domestic situation that you, you cited, an individual came to the station. But if somebody were to call right now about a domestic dispute, do we, do we automatically engage Deanna as well as, as NAPD? Or does NAPD respond first and then assess whether Deanna should be?
Again, we respond in triage.
Okay, the, the, the triage occurs not in dispatch, but by the officer that responds?
Right, if we get sent to the scene for a domestic disturbance or something like that, we'll, we'll go to the scene in triage.
Okay.
And again, even if an arrest is made based on what the, you know, the law is very specific when it comes to domestic violence. If we have to make an arrest, that doesn't mean the arrest is the end result. That means we contact Deanna the next day and say, hey, just so you know, we had this last night. And she can review it.
I, that's it right now at the moment for questions. I just wanna go back. I didn't wanna interrupt during the presentation, so I'm going back into slides. So I will, I will yield to colleagues and not monopolize this.
And I will say, I think Deanna has only been, we've only had Deanna part-time at the police station for about six months, right? I'd say about that now, but the feedback has been so positive, both from her and from the department, on how she's able to be a part of things she was not able to be a part of before because she's there as things unfold. It's been a really positive for us all.
I think, I mean, I'm excited to hear that because I know that there was a, a healthy discussion when we were developing the position about whether that person who filled that role ended up being Deanna, whether it should be somebody that's housed outside of the Police Department or inside. Cause I think initially when we, when we pursued it, we talked about it as a, a support specialist basically for folks dealing with substance misuse issues. And then it's funny how it ended up evolving in such a way that that's just a small piece of what she does. And, you know, in retrospect, there was such little conversation given to the, the value of this role when it came to like domestic disputes. And yet it ended up being probably perhaps the most valuable way that we utilize her. So certainly when it involves de-escalation and, and, and keeping people out of, out of jail and addressing the problem where it needs to be addressed instead of putting our officers in a, in a situation where they have to play social worker. Anyways, I will stop monopolizing.
Well, Chief, Chris here. So I, you know, I think Phil brings up a great point. I think the biggest question I've got really out of this is, what do you see are your biggest challenges going ahead, right? You know, it's the, the challenge of we've got a plan, you've put these things in place. But what are the things that you see are the challenges going ahead that we need to be aware of and that you're preparing for or thinking about?
So, the number one challenge right now is regaining community trust. And that has to get done because, again, even though incident may not have happened here, it's still the police. And we have to rebuild that community trust with North Andover and surrounding communities and let them know that we are an accredited department, we are held to a higher standard, we are aware of what's going on, and we're gonna do our best to make sure that the public can trust us again.
Yeah, I do think that's really important because a, a, any business can be painted by the actions of a group or individuals. And we have our own backyard here. And so I do think that it's wonderful that we haven't had these incidences, that there, there is a sense of community here overall, but there's a heightened sensitivity now everywhere, right? That, for good, for good reason. And so, good.
That's the primary objective right now.
So Chief, what are the steps that you'll be taking to regain that trust? Do we, do we have?
Again, we're, we're putting this out tonight to show everyone that we're an accredited agency and our policies, procedures, and best practices are up to standards of the national and state level and that we operate at that high, high level on a daily basis. And then after, we can, you know, obviously let the public know that we're there. You know, we, we go out and set the example every day and how we handle ourselves and how we do business. And that means professional, you know, officers out there protecting the town and serving people with dignity and respect.
And the duty to intervene and the policy that's gonna be rolled out this week too, this week, what, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So, again, we're, they're, they're trained that way at the recruit level academy and through use of force training biannually. And our DT instructors review it as well. But basically what it says is, if you're on scene with an incident occurring and an officer is using, again, that use of force continuum up and down. If that, what use of, I know that officer is coming in at, at a highly volatile level when that person is just being passively resistant, that other officer has a duty to intervene and get that officer away from that person and restrict further harm. So again, it, it's all about the use of force continuum and the officer's perception. And again, emotion may run hot, you know, perceptions may be different, but at the same time, officers have an obligation to protect even those in our custody. We have to protect them.
Thank you.
I will say that Chief Gray and I both share a, a philosophy about community policing and moving away from this ticketing metric and to really becoming more of an educational tool and also just a tool to protect and serve more than, than to implement bylaws and interlaws. But I think one of the things that he and I have been talking a lot about is, how do we work with the Police Department on becoming even more a fabric of the community, whether it's community events, community conversations, being more involved in the commission that we're gonna talk about tonight, figuring out ways to have more conversations and be the ones doing the listening rather than always being the ones doing the talking. And that's something that we're both committed to and the philosophy that we both share. So we're very lucky to have him here.
Melissa, I would add one, one, one tie into that, that I think has been very successful, is the resource officers at the high school. I think that community interaction, again, this is a difference, and this is why, you know, knowing what's in our backyard is important. That, I, I've seen firsthand how significant that is. And not just in terms of obviously dealing with immediate issues, but the sense that that creates, the trust. And I've seen kids that have gone through that high school and now years later, some of their most significant interactions were dealing with that. And sometimes very problematic, and sometimes it was just that communal piece. So I think we have a component already of that anchored in, in our community.
You're 100% right. It's relationships, right? They're all.
Chief.
Having, having said that, Mr. Chair, and directed, this is directed to the chief. So having said that, that the relationship building, so say somebody has, kind of has knowledge that something is kind of bubbling up in the community that just not, might not be good for any of us. Or how, how would you, what would you suggest that they do? Say, say they're, they're hearing information or just bad feelings in the community. What would you suggest that they do?
I'm actually getting text messages here telling me, one of my use of force instructors just chimed in and said, there's actually case law as well on intervention and, and officers' duty to intervene. Ms. Millie, can you say that again as far as?
Sure. It's saying that people in the community kind of are getting some information or just sort of, you know, that they're hearing that perhaps there's some information that would be helpful to the Police Department, that something sort of bubbling up that, you know, might not be so good for the community. What would you recommend that they do to, to perhaps let you know? Or what are the resources that they could use to, you know, be protected but kind of, kind of fill you in on what could be a situation brewing?
All right, so let's, let's revisit the if you see something, say something. And we have a number of mediums for them to reach out to us. We have the Crime Watch email, they can call the station and speak anonymously, they can ask questions, they can come down and visit us one-on-one. You know, we have a bunch of different mediums that can be utilized. And again, we'll, we'll listen to everyone. Every, every little bit of, of knowledge is good. And i, if it's something just like, you know, okay, it sounds good, we'll put it in the memory banks and see if anything comes of it. Or, you know, something, maybe we'll put something out and, and start looking into that. So any information is good. If you see something or you hear something, say something.
Thank you.
Um, Chief, a few years ago, we talked about this. And it, it's probably like how things go in cycles and, and we take it for granted that people know about these services. But I think it was right around when you first came into the position, we ended up adopting a technology that allowed residents to log information with the Police Department if they might have a child or a spouse or a sibling, somebody living in their home that may have exceptional needs. Like, for instance, somebody with dementia or, you know, more concerning to a lot of parents was if they had a child with autism that especially may have been non-verbal. And logging that information with you, if for whatever reason you ever had to respond to that address, you would know going in, the dispatcher would be able to say, you know, there's a call at 123 Main Street. Just, you know, be alert that, you know, there, you know, is a, you know, 25-year-old man, non-verbal with autism. So that way, it would help our department avoid, you know, there, there have been instances nationally with people who are on the autism spectrum and are non-verbal that have had, you know, awful experiences and, and life-ending experiences with police. And I don't think police or nobody wanted that to happen. And so do we still allow residents to submit that information and do we still maintain it and use it as part of dispatch?
Yes, and actually, we're, we're updating in our Rave Mobile.
Rave, exactly, rave.
And so, yeah, we do have that. We also have Project Lifesaver for, you know, wanderers and dementia. We actually used that recently on a male that walked off. Sergeant Davis runs that program and was able to locate the person using the technology. And again, I agree with you 100%. We had a missing female, non-verbal autistic, I wanna say a month and a half ago. And, you know, that's an all-hands-on-deck situation, and fortunately, we found her.
So do you, um, what's, what's a good, cause I, I actually don't even off the top of my head. What's, if I'm a parent sitting at home right now, listening to this meeting, where should I go in order to make sure that you know that? Again, I, I think especially, you know, if I'm a parent of an adult son, again, who's non-verbal or on the spectrum in such a way that they wouldn't be able to interact. Like I remember the example that was used when it was first adopted was, you know, especially because of their sensitivity to noise and certain light, you know, it, it would allow you to know, like, when you're approaching the home, you will encounter somebody, you know, on the autism spectrum who does not respond to like loud noises and may end up just clamming up. And you may, you, the average person may view it as them almost being resistant when in fact, they just don't know how to communicate. So if I'm a parent right now, or not even a parent, if I have a spouse or my own parent is dealing with dementia or Alzheimer's, how do I get that information?
So again, have them, have them call the station because we need to triage it, find out where, where to point them in the right direction. So they just call the right number and, and we can triage it from here.
What do you, well, no, I mean, I, I wanna tell you in advance, like, again, I, again.
Right, what you should do is you should call and, and let us know because if it's something that we can attach to a Rave Mobile database, we will. Or if we have to get them on Project Lifesaver, we will. Or if we have to put them in touch with Deanna, we will.
Okay, um, okay, so that's. So it's, it's called, it's just called a general line, not the emergency line to?
Right.
I hate using the term register, but to log, right, to log that person so that we, we, we help, help you have the tools and knowledge going into a situation, but also protect that resident.
Yeah, Lieutenant Folds and Chief McCarthy started that program a few years ago. And it was kind of, you know, it was, I forget the name of it, do you remember the name of it? But, um, it's.
Smart 911.
The Smart 911, you know, there's, there was another program you started, I, I wanna say three or four years ago, and it, it's morphed into this other program that IT's really worked with us on. But again, it, it's been in place for a while.
You can call and register your medicines and, you know, other things so then they respond or that you have three, two pets, so that if you have a fire in your house and they respond, they know to look for your two pets. It's a great, it's a great tool.
Yep, 100%.
But, but not only with what Florentino Caligero said and just what the town manager just said, but do you also log in people or who are hearing impaired or have vision impairment? So that you, an officer could be yelling at someone to stop or freeze or whatever, not knowing that the person doesn't hear. So is that also?
My, my phone's blowing up right now because I have another sergeant telling me, we actually have the notes in the database where if it's a two-officer call for a mental health issue or whatnot, it gives them a heads-up on the way while they're being dispatched.
Okay, that's really good to know because, you know, if they're telling them to stop and they don't hear it, it, uh, it gives you more tools to, to, to maintain the situation. Lot of great information that I'm, that I think the public just doesn't know, the tools that, that your department and the Fire Department use to keep, again, to keep everybody safe. It's great.
And you can see by the amount of messages getting from officers that are actually watching our, you know, have a vested interest in this and, and want this to, want, want our message to get out there that, yes, you know, we, we're doing our job to the best of our ability and we want everyone to know about it.
I'm impressed that they're listening to our meeting even, which is great.
Well, I think this presentation has been a great reminder, though, about how just over the past decade, you've identified and applied. New policies that make our department better in both how we respond and also how we treat folks in the community and understanding that not everything is. It, like you said, so black and white. Are there ways, I'm still sticking with that, or I guess closing on that, that last point about getting this information proactively to you? So that if there's ever a situation, you already have it when you're dispatching. I mean, are there ways that we as a select board can, can further support that beyond PR? I mean, are there, are there limitations that are in place right now that, that we could, that are there that you'd like us to help make that program more efficient? So that more people are able to get that information to you and again, your department can act and operate more efficiently.
I'm talking Detective Corona right now about that. We're kind of talking back and forth there. Probably something we'll, we'll get you offline and throw some ideas at you.
I mean, and this is, I, I, I think we all view it this way. This is not a one and done conversation, right? It's, it's the move target. It's about engaging and working with our police department and all our departments. So that we're engaging every aspect of our community appropriately. So that's, I, I don't want you to feel like you're placed on the spot. But I guess I, I have that openness and would like to know how we can, again, support it, it's not too different than a few years ago with the rave nine one one.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, we have a lot to offer, a lot for people to see. We're trying to be as transparent as we can and the more people that know at what level we're operating on, I think would help generate that public trust again.
I know this wasn't part of the, the presentation, but we had a, we had that strategy. You spearheaded it at Woodbridge specifically, you know, community policing around national night out. And I know neighborhood watch programs tend to run in cycles where a group of neighbors may be really passionate in one area. And then like with any volunteer exercise, people burn out and, you know, it ends up kind of dormant and then it comes back. Do you see neighborhood watch still being a viable strategy locally?
So neighborhood watch is, is, you know, it, it ebbed and flowed for a while. And, um, you know, that was back in two thousand nine, we had that horrific incident and it really, you know. Detective Cronin here was one of the instruments that made that thing work. Again, it kind of ran its course, but, you know, national net out, we talked last year about one of the reasons why we pulled the plug. And we were looking forward to this year to getting it up and going again, you know, still up in the air, I guess, right, Melissa, but not looking good. But again.
Actually, you know what I was just reading, Chief? That they're suggesting that if you move to October, October sixth, I read that today. So.
Yeah, that, that's great news then. So again, neighborhood watch programs, again, I've, I've talked about a community policing program that I want to try to implement. Speaking with the local and trying to, you know, find a way to, to make that happen. You know, any number of ways we could, you know, like, uh, the school resource officers, getting them out and involved in the community during the summertime if we can. And really just having positive interactions. So people see it as opposed to a negative reactions, you know. When people see us going down the street, they automatically assume something bad is going to happen. And that's not always the case.
And I, so for this, obviously, you know, neighborhood watches, I guess for anybody listening, where that may sound more concept of neighborhood watches. It's more, the neighborhood watches weren't about a bunch of people peeping out there and tabling each other. It was about them getting to know and work with officials so that way, I mean, it reinforced the community policing concept. So contrary to the name, it really was a, a great way to get the community.
Yeah, Sergeant Davis was actually holding meetings and going over the crime, you know, numbers and seeing was the trend, the trends in the community. You know, remember for a while we had a lot of car break, those have gone quite low. But again, Sergeant Davis was, was, you know, working with it. It just kind of, things just kind of fell, the wheels kind of fell off the wagon.
Well, again, Chief, please thank your, the officers for, for listening and chiming in and supporting you with more information. To keep us all informed. It just shows that how passionate your department is. On staying involved and getting the message out that they, they are working hard.
Thank you, I will. I will.
Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Next, we have an update on COVID.
Just me, a quick update. Third day in a row, no new cases. So we are very happy to report that. We actually checked twice. So that's great news. We're currently at three hundred and thirty cases total, thirty five deaths and two hundred and sixty five recovered. So keep doing what you're doing, people, because it's working. Playgrounds are opening tomorrow. So I just want to remind people, we cannot be cleaning those constantly. So we are asking people to practice social distancing, wear masks, make sure to wash their hands and do all the right things when they're using those playgrounds. But they are opening tomorrow. Youth sports are starting to open up in small groups. It has to be twelve and under, including the coaches, and it's only for drills, no contact sports at all. So it's practice drills, no games, parents not allowed to stay. Rick has been getting in contact with all of those folks. The pond is opening at the end of this month. We have been selling passes. It is going to be restricted. And so people should be aware that things are going to be a little bit different at the pond than usual. Part of the property opening, we're actually doing a de-escalation training for all employees, starting with the pond employees, but for everybody. Realizing that people may be upset when they're turned away from the pond due to a full or because certain things that they're used to are not available. But we're happy to be able to get that open. Summer camp is moving forward. Again, that will be in a limited fashion as well. Based on the guidance we received from the state, but we're happy to report that we are able to move that forward. Curbside at the library started today, so you can order your material online or call and they are available curbside. We have about twenty five percent of our employees returning in small groups. That's the most that we're allowed to have in the buildings at a time. So today was the first day of that and that was successful. People seemed happy to be back and seeing each other and doing all the right things. Lunches do end on June twenty ninth. The food bank will continue. We have completed a survey on need and we're going to be creating a resource guide for employees that feel they still need food assistance. That we can help them with still getting that food assistance as that program wraps up. That has been a very successful program thanks to people like D Casey and all of our friends like Erica Murphy over at the schools. And we're very thankful for all the work that has gone to that. That's been amazing. And that's it. We're slowly moving slowly back to, back to normal.
Do we have a, a view of the current, the North Andover? So it'd be interesting to see what that curve would look like with the number of cases. And, you know, it's now flattening. It would be nice to see what that, that curve would look like at some point.
Yeah, we can certainly create that. Now, I can tell you, based on the curves that we're seeing from the state level and our meetings with doctors. Is that the, the curve is interesting. It, it's very interesting to see where it would have been if we had not done the social distancing, the state order. When they show the graphs to what they think we were, where they think we were projecting to, to what we're now at. It's, it's amazing to see. We can certainly work on creating a graph showing the North Andover trend. It's time to show that, that down for trends. Hopefully that continues.
Yeah, hopefully, yes, absolutely.
We have quite a few restaurants open with outside dining at this point. We, we shared a list of them at our update last week. But quite a few restaurants now open with outside dining.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Any other questions with our manager on COVID?
Melissa, you said that the lunches were ending, but they do continue with the school department, right? Through the summer.
Yeah, the lunches for the students will still be available over the summer, pretty usual.
Um, I did get a, a question which is COVID related. So for, for certain businesses that had a C, that still can't open up. That can't have the, the volume of people that they're accustomed to. Is it, is it an option for them if they wanted to have an event or, or book space at the common? The feedback I got or the question I was literally asked probably thirty minutes before this meeting was, do you have to be a nonprofit? And my thought was that you didn't, but that whether or not you could derive a profit while using the common is a different story. So I didn't, I know that that's really a narrow question and I wish I, I just, I was asked it right before the meeting and.
No, no, you're good. I mean, so the gathering restrictions are still in place. And so currently we haven't been giving any permits for groups of more than ten due to those gathering restrictions still being in place. I anticipate that those are going to be lessened up as we go into phase two, part, phase two, part two, and phase three. I still don't think it's going to be large gatherings. You know, the numbers we're hearing are still small. And so we really haven't been given any permits for any events at all due to restrictions.
That was something that we talked about in the getting the businesses back to work sessions. And particularly with businesses that could use, like, for example. You know, like at a Robics craft that they really couldn't be using the inside of the building. So the policy has always been that people can use the common, but not for profit. But we did talk about it at that meeting and I feel strongly that it would be a good solution. That whether it's the common or any town property, that people could use it during this time. Just to get up and get working again. We didn't go into too much of what the exact policy would be. But as Melissa said, we still have to abide by the, the smaller groups. But I think that the people that should be able to use with a permit. Even for profit under these circumstances, because they have no other alternative. At least we should be open minded to the discussion. And that was talked about in the, the back to business group. That trying to get everybody in a good spot to open up again.
We've been having the conversation about the Stevens Estate as well, whether or not there is a way that we could partner with some businesses that maybe don't have outside space. That would want to host restaurant nights at Stevens Estate, you know, doing it obviously outside. Because the Stevens Estate can't open until phase three even for outside weddings. And so is that something that we could partner with some local businesses, unfortunately don't have that outdoor space that may want to? That's something we've been thinking about as well. But again, it's, it's hard due to, it's hard due to the gathering restrictions right now.
Melissa, do you, um, do you have an update on how many licenses so far have been, you've signed off on? Since last Tuesday when we, we waived our authority?
One minute, I can look it up. While she's looking it up, that we were pretty fortunate, pretty quickly, we got quite a few restaurants up and running. The, again, the town staff worked long and hard to get it, to get it going. So we were, North Andover was up and running with the businesses that did do their proper paperwork and get their plans and so forth. And ahead of many of our surrounding communities, so I, credit needs to be given to town staff. For making this happen, you know, to get these, you know, particularly as I'm saying, the restaurant opens for outdoor seating. So we were, they, they really did a great job. And so while, while you're looking that up, it'd be interesting to see how many did actually open as Phil said, so requested.
So on, on Thursday, there was twenty two.
How many, twenty two?
Twenty two on Thursday. Yeah, so we shared, we, in our update we did on Thursday, we shared, you know, how we do those bi weekly updates. We shared the list. And so right as of Thursday, it was Amici's, Boston Child Company, Burton's, Casafanka, Culpeppers. Decor Restaurant, Barrie's, Green Apple, The Cafe, Heavenly Donuts, Jamie's, Joe Fish, The Lost. Nine, Panera, Perfecto's, Ralph's Pub, South Pizza, Shadi's Restaurant, Shangju, Stachi's and Taki's Pizza.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Are we waiting?
I, I think that the chair might be frozen.
Okay, because I. I didn't know if we were literally waiting for additional data to that.
Yeah, I think we're good.
When do the fields open? Is that different?
Poor chair is stuck. So the fields are open for passive use right now. You can't have any competitive sports, you know, anything where you're touching each other. But the, the fields are open for passive use right now and then will be open for small group drills for youth sports only. Over eighteen is still not, over eighteen is not in phase two. Over eighteen is not in phase two part one, so it's youth only. The basketball courts, we're looking at the week of the twenty second.
And I just saw a notice from the YMCA, they're looking to open on the twenty ninth. So this would all kind of be in sync with that, it looks like.
Well, that's great news, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really important for parents that we get summer camp up and running and we recommend that. I think the chair may still be having technical issues. Let's see.
His phone was very, his voice was very hard for me to hear and understand. So there's a lot of, there is a lot of stuff going on today with people's phones not working properly, not being able to download things. So I think there's just some technical issues that are happening. And I don't know why. Do you want me to carry on or shall we wait a little bit longer for our chair?
I, I mean, I think we could safely move on to the next, the consent calendar unless anyone has a objection.
Fine with that.
Okay, so consent items, accept a donation from Comcast for temporary wifi for the annual town meeting. Providing additional wifi coverage for town meeting so that people can access, access, excuse me, the information on their tablets and phones. Anybody have any questions for the town manager or comment?
Melissa, Chris here. So one, one question, is this, um, the value of this? Is this counted against the, or as part of their in kind? Support of CAM and, and community television, because remember that shift.
Yeah, no, I believe it's just a, a regular donation, which is why I think we have to accept it. They're just, we requested it and they're giving it to us as a gift.
Okay.
What's the value for that?
It's a good question. I don't know. They didn't tell us. So I, I can follow up and ask that question. But basically, the concern is that we're not going to have enough wifi at town meeting if everybody's operating their devices at the same time. Kind of like my house right now. So there, the thought is that if we have this truck available, it's like, it's like a wifi van. Basically, that will just sit and pump wifi through the entire.
I don't want to think that my question is anything more than just wanting to know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
I mean, that's, it's great that they're willing to do this. And so it's just another way that we're going to make a guest town meeting work tomorrow.
Yes.
We hope.
It's going to work. It's going to be great.
Yes.
There you go. I'm turning the gavel back over to you.
The funny thing is that I could hear you guys the whole time and I'm like, you can't hear me? You know, I could hear everybody. I could see everybody. I just, I guess I was frozen. But, um, secondly, thank you for moving us forward. Did we actually get a motion on the?
We did not. So there you go.
Okay, so can we get a motion on consent items?
Um, I, I motion approval of the consent item, specifically, there's only one item. The donation from Comcast for temporary wifi for our annual town meeting tomorrow evening. The donation from Comcast for temporary wifi for our annual town meeting tomorrow evening.
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any uh, comments for the discussion? All right, well, our, thank you to Comcast for supporting us uh, for town meeting. Um, so we will do a roundtable or, or roll call vote.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay. Let's move on to new business. Um, first, we have a discussion regarding the formation of a diversity commission. Madam Town Manager, would you like to walk us through this proposal?
I think today, um, and I know you just received this, um, we had staff running through it. Um, we're just going to talk about it and hopefully we'll, we'll take a, a, a vote on whether or not we want to implement this at the next meeting. Um, but one of the things that we've been talking about internally is that we think the town would benefit from a commission for inclusion, equity, and diversity. Um, and so we created um, this mission statement based on the kind of new form that we're using commission statements. So the, the beginning of it, um, and this is linked to the agenda as well, if, if people at home want to see it. Um, the beginning of it really talks about um, what the central focus would be, and that's advocating and advising on diversity issues, providing information, guidance, education, and coordination to our agencies, private people, organizations, institutions. Um, and, and it's really all of the, the different classes. Um, so it would include um, race, language, ethnicity, national origin, citizen status, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic class, physical and mental ability, religion, marital status, military status, or age. And the membership that we're suggesting um, is the Town Human Resources Director, a member of Disability Commission, a member of the Youth Recreation Council, the Director of Youth Services, Detective Lieutenant Criminal Investigations Division, who is Lieutenant Folds, a member of the School Administration, one member of the North Andover Race Amity Committee, one member of Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices, two clergy members, the Deputy Town Manager, the Community Support Coordinator at Siena, a member of the Building a Respectful Community Committee, two residents, a member of the Council on Aging, a minority business owner. And then it was mentioned today, um, when I met with the um, the group from Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices that maybe including someone from Merrimack College might be a good idea as well. So that's something we can talk about. Um, the commission would serve a two-year term, may elect its own chair. And, and the thought basically is that this commission would be advisory. They provide advisory recommendations to the town manager and the board of selectmen. And they would look at our policies, the way that we operate, and they would recommend strategies um, for maintaining, creating a cohesive community that respects everyone. Uh, and also effective strategies of public engagement, ways for us to remove barriers and increase access um, for everyone in our population. They would make recommendations for town investment, um, in order to get to root causes of inequities and lack of access and in order to help us create better community partnerships. Um, and, and you know, I know this is a lot. It goes um, it will work through education and outreach, discourage prejudice and discrimination. And additionally, one thing that I've been, I've been thinking about is starting this North Andover Conversation Series, which is really like a less, a listening session for officials. Um, I'd like to start that sooner rather than later. And then this group would be responsible for continuing that conversation series to make sure that we're having ongoing conversations with, with everyone in the community, um, so that we can learn, be educated, and have a listening tool, um, rather than always being the ones that are being heard.
This is, you know, a fantastic step. And I think, um, I think our community was looking for um, beyond our, our statement, uh, really, what are we going to do and what have we done? And I think we, we made some great steps uh, in bringing that to light. And per, today particularly because of the Supreme Court reaffirmation about, uh, you know, just again, uh, equality of opportunity. And uh, this is fantastic. My, my only real question to you is what level of authority do you envision this group have in terms of access to information? Because one of the things that um, you're asking, I, I think this group to do is be a, a resource to get, uh, to, to have information come together, but also they need to be able to see certain things and be able to pull that together. Ho- how do you see them synthesizing that, Melissa?
I, so I think having key members of the administration, the HR Director, the Deputy Town Manager, the Community Support Coordinator, people from the School Department, people from the Police Department, people at Youth Services, they're going to have people really that, that have knowledge of what goes on in town and how the town operates. Um, and I think that having that is really important, but I think it also has to be balanced, right? You have to have people who aren't insiders so that the committee is fair and equitable and honest, right? But you also have to have people who, who understand how the town works and who has access to information, has access to, to really our internal operation in order to be able to bring that information to the table. So I think having that mix and the reason I like the way this composition is because you get both of those things. And so you have people who will be able to bring really pertinent information um, to this committee and, and share, which is important.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's great. Uh, the other uh, piece of this, of course, is the privacy issue. That um, you, you want people to feel comfortable to participate. Um, but there are also things that, that there are going to be a lot of sensitivities that, that can come up and conversations that people want or need to be private. So I think um, addressing that, I think will be important because that's the other part of transparency is creating a, a safe environment for that information to come together and to be used appropriately.
My, my initial reaction is that I think that, much like Selectman Nobley said, and this is an important step, I think, in, in making sure that, you know, we we live our values as a community. Um, one thing that jumped out is only because I know that as a commission, they worked very hard on this. It's the Commission on Ability Assistance, um, right? That's the name that we've, we've tried to adopt and use locally. Um, only be, they've come to us specifically to ask that. So just as an, as an aside, as we seek to do better with including every um, invested group in this. Are, do we, do we feel, Melissa, that, I mean, this is a seventeen-person commission? I've, I've never participated in a, a working group of that size before. I mean, do we think that it's exceeded the point where it, it will almost be too large to be productive?
Um, it's large. I think that if they have particular tasks that they're going to take on, it would make sense for them to, to form subcommittees. Um, and report back to the larger group. But I, I also think that this is a large conversation, right?
I, I agree. I think we're casting a wide net here to, to ensure that nothing is getting through. I think we've got a, a very large and well um, represented population here. And, and um, second, we did have, I know it's not the, are you just suggesting that instead of saying member of the civil commission, we take that to a member of, of um,
The Commission on Ability Assistance.
Right, we need to change that name. Yeah, when I first looked at this too, I thought, wow, that's a lot of hope to try to manage in a meeting. Um, and everyone looking from the makeup of this, everyone is going to probably have a lot of good input. Um, but I think, you know, being, having all those different diverse voices in the, on this committee or on this commission would be helpful in, in showing that nothing gets through, nothing falls through.
Who will um, choose the members of like the community or the clergy members that will serve on the committee or the commission?
So usually what happens is that we would reach out to these groups and ask them to um, submit one person to the Board of Selectmen. And then the Board of Selectmen would ratify that appointment. Um, I noticed that over the weekend, there was a op-ed that was done by the North Andover Andover Interfaith Clergy Association, um, which might be a good place for us to start. We went with two clergy members because I think that it's a very diverse population, right? And there's a lot of different um, types of faith out there. And so I think that it's important to kind of have two perspectives.
So, so following up on uh, uh, on, on Select, on Select Board Member Bates' comment, the two residents, so how do we, how does that happen?
I'm thinking the same way you do the rest of your committees, that we'll post it.
Okay.
And then we can interview them.
All right.
Uh, I, I think that you're going to see a lot of interest in serving on this committee.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And you know what? That's fabulous because oftentimes when we get people's resumes for a, a committee like this, we hold them for other committees that we have come up. So there's a lot of opportunity right now in North Andover for, for change and for inclusiveness. And that, this could be the catalyst for that as well.
The, the one thing, so Melissa, I, I know that you and I had a conversation earlier today about this. And the one thing that I thought of regarding the two town residents is just putting a caveat that at least one of them must have English, not as their first language. Cause you know, the context of the conversation today is, um, we're talking a lot about uh, black and brown, but obviously, I mean, there's a deeper conversation about race, but obviously our proximity to a lot of immigrant communities. And I'm predominantly Spanish speaking. Um, that's been something that I think that we've strived to try to um, close some, some gaps regarding services over the past, actually, I think for probably the past few decades. And so I would, I would hate to see us create this, this large group and then, you know, at the end of it, look back and say, well, gee, we, we completely missed what really is a ser- a, a group that really needs to have a seat at this table. Um, and that is, I don't know that we always appreciate, I should say that. I think that we do often appreciate, but don't always know um, how to root out and identify the best way to accommodate folks living here in town um, or coming into town. They may not live here. They may just be working here or traveling through, who may not have English as their first language. And um, it would be helpful to have that perspective, I think, around that table and, and help identify ways that we can do better regarding that.
Okay, any other comments? Well, Melissa, thank you and your team for putting this together. I think tonight was intended to be like a first pass of this, of the draft and see if there are any changes that would be made. And I think we've heard a couple tonight. Um, potentially the addition of a mem- member of the Merrimack College Community, um, and then some wording changes. Um, and then I will bring this to our next meeting to vote on the final version of this document. So if you do have any other changes or comments, if you redo it again and, uh, in a little more detail, um, you know, please bring those forward to Melissa. And we will um, have a formal vote on this, uh, formation of this commission at our next meeting.
I think in the meantime, right, the public, anybody listening to this meeting, um, or anybody who's tuning in even after the fact, provide feedback. I mean, obviously, the, the, the broadest possible input will be helpful because the, the mission of this committee very much depends on people. Like, right, it's all about people's input. So we don't want to put together a committee that at the end of the day ends up, you know, having a colossal blind spot that may not be obvious to, to us, especially because we've been talking about it, um, and creating it from scratch. So give us feedback, please.
Yep, good call. Okay, thank you. Um, so next on the agenda, we have um, a vote to uh, accept the um, the sale of general obligation bonds of the town. Um, so for this, we have a rather large um, motion that needs to be read by the clerk. Um, and then, but let's first, um, Madam Town Manager, do you want to give us an overview of this item? And then we can go through the motion.
Sure, this is a little, the bond row is a little bit confusing. Basically, um, we had some projects that were authorized at the last year's town meeting. Um, as you know, we went through our um, annual re- our rating process. We were reaffirmed as AAA community again, which is great news. Um, we went out to bid for the bonds and these were our lowest bids. Um, we're very happy with the, the rate that we received. Uh, uh, our inclusive cost is actually about one point one percent, um, which is, is very positive. Uh, so we're, we're very excited that we're able to um, get this, of this current interest rate. So, good news, all around. And that the total maturity value is about two point four million dollars.
Okay, any um, questions, comments before we go to the motion? Okay, Madam, quick, would you um, do us the honor of reading the motion, please?
Okay, so I'm having a little trouble with my computer, so um, or laptop. So I'm reading votes of the Board of Selectmen. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, votes of the Board of Selectmen, aye. The clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Andover, Massachusetts, the town, certified that a meeting of the board held June fifteenth, of which a meeting of all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appeared upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the two million four hundred seventy-five thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of twenty-twenty bonds of the town dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, the bond to Fidelity Capital Market at the price of two thousand eight thirty-five, no, excuse me, two million eight thirty-five, one hundred and forty-nine and seventy-two cents, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on June fifteenth of the year and in the principal amounts and bears in their interest at the respective rate as follows. Years twenty-twenty-one, four hundred and five thousand, five percent. Twenty-twenty-two, four hundred thousand, five percent. Year twenty-twenty-three, four hundred thousand, five percent. Twenty-twenty-four, four hundred thousand, five percent. Twenty-twenty-five, four hundred thousand, five percent. Twenty-twenty-six, ninety-five thousand, five percent. Twenty-twenty-seven, ninety-five thousand, five percent. Twenty-twenty-eight, ninety-five thousand, four percent. Twenty-twenty-nine, ninety-five thousand, three percent. Twenty-thirty, ninety thousand, two percent. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and the sale of the bond, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June fourth, twenty-twenty, and a final official statement dated June eleventh, twenty-twenty, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer and be hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Hold on one minute, I've got to scroll down. Further voted, the bond shall be su- subject to redemption at the option of the town. Upon such terms and conditions are as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with the SEC Rule fifteen C two dash one-two in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bond for the benefit of the holders of the bond from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and the bond coun- bond council deemed sufficient or if such procedures are, hold on again. Currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt sta- status of the bonds and to comply with the relevant security laws. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place or the method of assessing date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda includes the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in the Or in the municipal building at which the office town clerk is located. Or if the Attorney General has set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot zero three two B. At least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays and Sundays and legal holidays. Prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting. And that no deliberation or decisions in connection with the sale of the bond were taken in executive session. All in accordance with the general law, is that, that's an L, I'm presuming, uh, C dot three thirty A. Eighteen dash twenty-five, as amended in accordance with the governor's emergency order dated March twelfth, twenty twenty. Authorizing remote meetings during the COVID nineteen related state of emergencies, if applicable. Dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty. The clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that was the motion for the bonds. Uh, we would need a second on that motion.
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion or questions on, um, the motion as, as read? Okay, um, I don't think we've formally said this, but I'd like to congratulate the town staff once again and, and all of us, I guess. For the, uh, the AAA bond rating that was achieved, um, for, um, I think third, well, third consecutive year. Thank you. Um, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, we'll go roll call vote. How do you vote on your motion?
Rosemary Smith Dilly, aye.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt, aye.
Okay, so thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, so tomorrow we'll need to sign all those bonds, although, um. And we'll be doing that during town meeting tomorrow.
Mister Chair, if anyone is available to come into the office, it's a very large document and we're very anxious about losing pages. So if anyone's available to come into the office, we would appreciate that. Uh, we should be there most of the day.
Good point. So if you have an opportunity to swing by the town office to, to sign the documents, that would probably be, um. Better off than not trying to shuffle them around at town meeting. Okay, um, so we'll move to old business, update on town meeting and discussion on town meeting articles. Uh, I don't believe we have any articles still open that we were gonna vote on.
No, but I'm happy to report that the Finance Committee did vote to recommend, um, all the budget articles tonight. So everything is now voted on by everyone. So that's great news.
That is great.
Seen any of those open tonight? We didn't see any of those based on their decision. I, I think we went ahead and made our own determination prior to them. Okay.
Yes, you're in good shape.
Okay, um, any, so I know we've had a, um, we've had. A request for RSVP to town meeting. Do we have any kind of numbers from that RSVP?
Um, based on my call this morning, we have about two hundred people who have RSVP.
Oh.
Yep, um, weather looks great, between seventy-three and seventy-seven now, no wind. Um, so good time to come to town meeting and, and it will be comfortable, which we're excited about. Um, we have reordered the meeting, as you know, there's gonna be three, um, consent, four consent groups. Um, that will go first and then, um, which are, are made up of our routine business, more consent than we typically would see. And then we revert to a new order of business, which starts with the senior center. Um, so, and we, we jump around from there basically, um. But it's, it's ordered in order to try to, um, help residents who may need to leave earlier, um, be there for the business that's most pressing. Uh, and so we're, we're happy about that. Uh, we did do the virtual town hall for the TIF, which was very, um, I don't know if any of you got to watch it. Uh, we had four people call in and we received about, probably a dozen or so, um, calls of email questions. Which are now, the answers to those are now available on our website, um, as well as the video. We shared it today on Facebook too. Um, I, I thought it went very well, so that was great news. Um, one thing that we did learn, since I presented the TIF to you and since we've talked about it, is the personal property number. And so we, we have found out that the personal property number, um, in the first year is going to be a hundred million dollars. Um, personal property obviously depreciates over time. So based on that new personal property number, um, we now have realized that over a twenty-year period. The TIF will bring in eighty-five, more than eighty-five million dollars. Um, the project will bring in more than eighty-five million dollars over twenty years. Um, and if you add in the eight point six million dollars in community benefits and the estimated four million dollars in permit fees, it's ninety-eight million dollars over twenty years. Um, and, and one of the other things that we've been talking about, um, is that if we do not approve the TIF. Amazon very clearly stated, for those of you that watched it, that it would be reevaluating the project and may not construct it. Um, if the building stays as is over that same twenty-year period, the tax revenue is twelve million.
And, um. And Madam Town Manager, and it also doesn't include the economic development of the supporting businesses that, um. Will come into play as well. Um, so it's good news. That, um, personal property number is very, that's great news.
Yeah, we're thrilled. Um, so that, that was, um. I thought that the virtual town hall went very well and I'm very thankful to Andrew and to Brad Griggs from Amazon for, um, being there and contributing to that.
Sounds good.
Great. And, and also available, um, on North End of a Cam, and I think it's playing once in a while, is the On the Warrant. Um, show that really talks about what's, you know, what's on the warrant and, and gives some insights to what's going on. What's gonna be talk, discussed at town meeting.
Yes, and, um, there'll be a packet given out at town meeting for people who do not have internet access that include all the presentations, the, and the motions. And we'll have ten copies available on the ground.
Okay, um, okay, thank you for that update. Uh, and then next we have the Town Manager's Report, so we can segue right into that.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I have a million things open and I don't, there's nothing, I don't think I have anything else. What? Listed on the panel? Sorry, so many screens.
Yeah, I know, you didn't have anything.
I did have a, a general question just about an update regarding the settlements for Columbia Gas. Where, you know, I, I keep getting calls from residents about how that settlement panned out. And, um, what, what's happening with the class action? Do we have an, do we have an update in some direction that we can give folks who are calling?
So my understanding is that there are some concerns about the attorney's fees. Um, and I believe that the Attorney General has actually opened up a claim, um, and is investigating that. So if there are residents who feel that their attorney's fees are either incorrect or being charged doubly. You should be reaching out to the Attorney General's Office. You can join that investigation.
Do we have a, a, a specific contact or should they just call the, the AG's office and then?
If they call the AG's office and they ask for, um, it's usually consumer, ask for the Consumer Reports Division, um, that's the division that's investigating it.
Okay.
And I can, uh, I can update that on our website.
I think that would be helpful because it is, I think it's been really confusing, especially for those residents who didn't sign on to the actual class action. I, I just, I, there's a lot of different information. A lot of people are, are. I think confused and I think that we, even if it's not under our purview, I think that they turn to us and, and town hall. Because we worked so well with getting information out to them initially and, and through the whole process, really. I just think a lot of them don't know where to turn, so.
Uh, anything else for the Town Manager before we move on? Okay, so let's move to selectman updates and comments. Uh, I'd like to kick it off. Um, so starting this week, we're gonna have the, uh, Field of Honor, uh, the flags will be, um, put on. Not in a common. I believe there are still flags available if people want to sponsor a flag for, uh, in memory. Or in honor of one of, uh, a loved one or someone. Um, and you can get, you can purchase the flags at XCflags.com. So that's X, uh, so Exchange Club Flags dot com, XCflag dot com. And at the end of it, you end up keeping the flags. So the flag will hang, uh, from June twenty-first, I believe until July fourth. And then on the common, and then at the end of it, the flags will be taken down and people can go and pick up their flags and take them home with them.
Um, Mister Chair, could you, when you're saying X, are you saying the letter X, not EX, so the letter X?
The letter X, the letter X, the letter C. F L A G S dot com.
Okay, thank you.
Virgin Flags.
Thank you.
That was the only update that I have. Um, we can go around the, the room, um, if anybody else has any updates or comments you'd like to make.
Well, yesterday, the town had its kickoff of the fourth season of the farmer's market and it looked very different than the past few years. So they had lining up down, um, First Street, uh, towards the direction of Maple Ave. Um, they had limits to the number of folks who were able to actually be in the market at one time. Um, well, normally they had about, you know, thirty vendors on a given day. In prior years, this year, physically on site, they had three vendors. While the rest was done, um, for online pickup. So, um, I, I want to say thank you to the town staff that helped. The volunteers be able to put this together because it was really a labor of love this year, especially compared to prior years. And, uh, I look forward to hopefully, uh, the easing of restrictions so that more people can come and enjoy the parts of this market that. That have made it so worthwhile in past years, so.
Phil, it's D. I was able to attend and it was very well-run. Everybody was very well organized and they knew how to queue up and I was very happy with the produce that I was able to get. But yeah, it is a very different feel from past years.
I mean, we can say that the, the folks, the vendors that were there are, are fish vendor who's been there every year since we started. Two produce vendors that have both been here every year since they started, um, including a North Andover resident for, for Galway Farm. Um, they all were selling out, so, but the lining up and, and I, it's just dramatically different, right? The experience that people expect, um, can't exist this year so far. So fingers crossed that there's some relaxation to that policy from the state level so that we can put more vendors in that space and. Make it a little bit more fulfilling for the people who are able to attend.
You know, it.
Thank you for being, sticking with that. So, you know, it's really an important event for the town and. Um, it really is a great, a great service that, that's provided. It's unfortunate that it has to be so scaled back this year. But, you know, I know you guys will do your best and, and will get as much of it to us as possible. Um, I too attended yesterday. I got the last of the cod from, from Roberto's, so I was very happy with that. So, yeah, you, you know, everyone's doing their best and we all, we very much appreciate it. Sorry, Rosemary.
No, 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 I'm sorry. It's hard to tell when someone's finished speaking, um, sometimes, because you don't see, see, oh, I don't see your faces. But, um, so what about the artisan market? Um, is that still going to be proposed for a couple of times this year or?
I think the plan is only for August. So I, I did take a step back from, so I'm just a grunt this year on the committee. So this year, the Farmers Market Committee is led by, by Margie Rothschild, who used to work for actually the town of North Andover. And so she, she moved on professionally, but took up the mantle of this as a volunteer and really. Thank God, because I don't know that I, I would have had the vision or the patience to execute it the way that she did. So Sally Finnamore does the artisan market and initially because of the distancing between vendors, it just didn't. I actually don't think that it was even going to be allowed. Um, and so this year, I think that the plan is for a single one in October. But don't, don't quote me at the moment on that.
Well, they, they have time to decide if they think it will work, so it's good to hope for October, but. And I'll, and I'll bet you it will work by then. I, I really am hopeful that we'll have, um. You know, some changes to the positive of getting us back to normal, so. Well, thank you for the report and thanks to all that are, that are doing this. It still brings people i- into the downtown as well, so even if it's not as many. It's still kind of letting people know that we're doing our best to get back to normal, so it's good.
Okay, any other comments from anyone, updates? I think our parade for the, uh, for the students was quite successful. There was a lot of people attended. As well as, um, I know the middle school had some kind of a, um, honk-off or something like that, I think they called it. For the graduating or for the, um, the moving up eighth graders. So congratulations to all of, um, those students who are moving to the next phase in their educational experience. Um, our next meeting is, uh, wow, it's way off, tomorrow night at town meeting. Uh, town meeting starts at five o'clock, uh, so we hope to see as many people there as, um, you, as possible. Um, and it will be held at Wall Stadium and we will adhere to social distancing. And, um, rules of our current, rules that we are under, given the current pandemic state. So everyone should be bringing their masks and be prepared to, um, you know, socially distance from their fellow residents.
Mister Chair, am I, we're assuming we're not meeting tomorrow before the meeting?
Um, to my, yeah, I, I don't think we, I don't think we have any business to conduct right now, if anything should come up.
Okay, great.
That, we have a meeting, we had a meeting hosted, right?
Yes, sir.
Right now, we have nothing on, to meet about. If anything should come up, we do have the meeting hosted, but I don't think we'll end up meeting it. Okay, do I have a motion for adjourn, for adjourn?
So moved, Mister Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, and we'll do a, uh, roll call vote.
Rosemary Smith Dilly, aye.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Thank you all. Have a good night and we'll see you all tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.